All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors. Today is Tuesday, October 20th. We will begin with the flag salute. Supervisor Yuler, if you would lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we are all here, so we won't take role, but we first have a closed-session item, and we'll have County Council.
The Board will now adjourn to closed session to consider two items. One is existing litigation, and the second will be labor negotiations.
All right, thank you. So we should be back here at, hopefully, 10 o'clock sharp to start our workshop. Thank you, everyone. County Council, report out from closed session.
I had to figure out how to use the mic. The Board meant in closed session to consider two items. On the first one, existing litigation. Placer County Deputy Sheriff’s Association versus County of Placer. The Board heard a report and provided direction. On the second item, conference with labor negotiators. The Board heard a report and provided direction. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you, Karen. All right, we are going to move to the item of discussion this morning, and this is our Fire Services Ad-Hoc Committee Report and next steps on the Placer County Sustainable Fire EMS Services. So thank you, first of all, everyone, for joining us today for this special workshop. We really appreciate it. Our hope was that we'd have a little bit more of a comfortable informal discussion where we were socially distanced. Unfortunately, we're up here, but, you know, my hope is that we will have some good conversation, interaction between the Board and our CAL FIRE folks. So thanks for taking the time this morning, and it looks like Jane took off her mask to speak, so I'll let you start it off, Jane. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Gore, Supervisors. Pleased to be here with you this morning, together with our ad hoc Fire Services team. I'd like to introduce the folks before you at the front tables, who are here to share the story of the Fire Services Ad-Hoc Committee over the last two years for today's Board Workshop on the Future of Fire EMS Services for the Placer County Fire Department. My name is Jane Christensen. I serve as the Assistant CEO for Placer County. Here today as well is Becky Riggan, Deputy CEO, Placer County Fire Department Chief Brian Estes, Sarah Poindexter, Management Analyst in the CEO’s Office, Jim Hudson, also a Chief with the Placer County Fire Department, and Susan Goodwin and Cindy Yan of Goodwin Associates. Again, there were many facets of this issue, service issues, fiscal issues, which we're pleased to share with you here today. Next slide, please. Our purpose today is to recap the impetus for the Fire EMS review, which began actually three years ago, which predated some of us both on the dais and here down at the presenting table. I expect throughout the course of our discussions this morning, you will hear from your ad hoc committee members, Supervisors Holmes and Gustafson, who, again, did the deeper dive on these issues in committee work over the last two years. We're here to outline the Placer County Fire Department’s service and fiscal challenges we face now and into the future, updating the Board on the Fire Services work to date, the foundational analyses that have essentially informed this work over the last two years, and then present some alternatives for the Board to consider, again, towards a more sustainable future for the Placer County Fire Department. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Becky to share some of this foundational work.
Thank you, Jane. Good morning, Chair Gore, members of the Board. In 2017, your Board received a report by Treasurer-Tax Collector Janine Windishausen on six distressed fire service areas within Placer County. This comprehensive report detailed the challenges faced by six fire service areas across the county, specifically three special districts, Placer Hills, Forest Hill, and Penrin, and three zones of benefit within Placer County Fire, Western Placer, Dry Creek, and North Auburn Ofer, all of which were facing longstanding fiscal challenges. Three key findings from that report were as follows: that service delivery costs were outpacing revenues, and that the primary source of fire services funding, allocated property tax rates established in the late '70s, were simply not keeping up with the cost to provide basic services in our expanding population. The report also noted that decreasing fire and emergency service levels would further escalate fire insurance rates and policy cancellations to the economic detriment of the county. In 2018, county executive staff provided further analysis of the fiscal and operational challenges facing Western Placer County, the area serviced by Placer County Fire Department through a cooperative agreement with CAL FIRE. Following this presentation, your Board directed the formation of the Fire Services Ad-Hoc Committee to address the revenue shortfalls and to achieve the long-term fiscal sustainability for Placer County Fire Department. Next slide, please. The first order of business of the ad hoc was to initiate a Standards of Cover Study, which is a comprehensive assessment of fire department operations, highlighting community demographics, risk, resource and staff deployment, and overall response capability. The report provides an independent review of past performance and offers strategic recommendations to ensure a safe and effective emergency response system. The report provided three key findings around staffing and levels of service, response capability in new areas of development, and dispatch services. And I'll hand the presentation over to Chief Estes to walk us through each of those areas.
Okay, thank you, Becky, and good morning, Chair Gore, and members of the Board. So, you know, one of the things about a Standards of Cover that's a little bit different from any, you know, other of the fiscal studies that we do in fire and emergency services is that it focuses not only on some of the fiscal challenges of sustainability, but it also looks at the future of your options in new development and growth, and how to maximize through depth of resource your performance opportunities in your fire department. And really, what we were looking for in the outcome was three key findings, or measurable and attainable objectives, that we could seek to find solutions for. The number-one and prioritized recommendation to the Placer County Fire Department was to standardize the level of staffing and to increase 100% from basic life support to advanced life support. Currently, within the Placer County Fire Department, we have a mixture of staffing levels ranging from two-person staffing to three-person staffing, even to four-person staffing on our ladder truck. And we do have a mixture of advanced life support, paramedic services, and basic life support. So that was key finding number one, and I agree with that 100%. The second key finding was really to be aggressive and comprehensive in looking at new development in the south and western ends of the county, and we've been working vigorously with the planning and development agencies here within the county to ensure that all the new development in south and western Placer County has a sustainable fire service model that is in line with the county's general plan, an urban response model, and offers the highest level of service. And the third key finding was an evaluation of our dispatch services in Placer County. As you've heard me say before, one of our issues we have here are five separate dispatch centers within Placer County, including three cities, the Sheriff's Office, and the Grass Valley Emergency Command Center. And so we looked at different models, and we looked at different services provided by those entities, and the key finding was to look at a CAD-to-CAD system, meaning a system that could talk to each other to reduce transfer times, and also be able to, you know, comprehensively look at data and acquire that data so we can bring efficiency to the system. With that, I'll turn it over to Sarah Poindexter.
Upon completion of the Standards of Cover Study, staff worked with Goodwin Consulting through an existing agreement to conduct a comprehensive fiscal analysis of Placer County Fire. The scope of work included a system-wide financial assessment of Placer County Fire as it stands today, to include a review of all revenues and expenditures within each zone of benefit. And then staff also requested that the analysis include additional layers to incorporate capital needs to address facility maintenance and an aging fleet, the Standards of Cover staffing recommendations and associated costs, and opportunities for restructuring expenditures across the zones of benefit. In order to conduct the analysis, Goodwin and colleagues were provided with the following data: fiscal year 1920 budgets and reserve balances for all zones of benefit and the Fire Control Fund, fiscal year 1920 direct charges and special assessments for each zone of benefit, the cost to bring facilities to an acceptable level of repair and replace outdated apparatus, and parcel counts, tax rate areas, county use codes, and population data for each zone of benefit. The analysis included the following assumptions: a 2% annual increase in assessed values for property tax calculations, a 2.4 annual increase in direct charge revenues for applicable zones of benefit, a 3% annual increase in CAL FIRE personnel costs, and a 2% annual increase for all other revenues and expenses. With that, I will turn it back to Jane Christensen.
The Fire Service Ad-Hoc Committee, as articulated, began its work in 2018 after being chartered by the Board, and their work to date has included the evaluation of all the aforementioned work. The Standards of Cover Study, the matrix look at what are historical fire service delivery models and how those perhaps might need to evolve for the modern day, the long-term fire and EMS fiscal sustainability, both for PCFD as a whole and its component zone of benefit parts, and how those, again, need to be brought to the modern day in terms of today's service delivery model and the reality of that service delivery model cost. Looking at the fiscal analysis, again, for the alternatives that we'll bring forward to the Board near the end of this presentation, and really prioritizing the need to stabilize PCFD and its zones fiscally before we looked at optimizing service delivery models to evolve our service and fiscal models towards a more sustainable future for the Placer County Fire Department. Next slide, please. As many of you know, who have been with Placer for some time, you know that we have this somewhat fragmented patchwork of fire service delivery here in Placer County. We've got municipal fire departments, we've got the Placer County Fire Department, we've got special districts, we've got state responsibility areas, as well as a significant portion of federal land administered by the U.S. Forest Service. All of these differing areas that you see in this colored patchwork have varying service models, professional versus volunteer, fiscal health in terms of their long-term revenue sustainability, and operating cost, how it is that they actually deliver these services, and if they're optimizing the efficiency of, again, fire service delivery in the modern day. What you noticed here is the yellow area that, at the top of this graph, which essentially is Placer's border along the Sutter, Yuma, and Nevada county border, that comprises the service area of our Placer County Fire Department, which is approximately 1/3 of the geography of Placer County. Next slide, please. Our Placer County Fire Department is really a longstanding partnership between Placer County and CAL FIRE, which in many ways, we think, offers Placer and its residents the best of both worlds. We've got high-quality local service delivery for those critical fire and EMS services, but with the regional depth and frankly, bench strength of the largest full-service fire and EMS provider in the state of California. So, again, high-quality local and a very significant powerhouse in terms of service depth and capacity by virtue of the CAL FIRE relationship. We've got a competitive cost per call as compared to other independent fire districts throughout the county, and mutual aid services, significant mutual aid services to the other independent districts, in addition to a range of region-wide services and benefits that Chief Estes will speak to in just a bit. The Placer County Fire Department's service model, at a glance, as I mentioned, we have a regionally competitive cost per call, actually the fourth lowest in Placer County. We've got a high call volume which affords Placer County the economies of scale, again, of a large service provider, with a large service area, again, that 475 square miles, which is about 1/3 of Placer County's geography, with a significant asset protection and life safety portfolio, 6.7 billion in terms of the built environment, 19,000 residences serving over 58,000 residents here in Placer County. Another significant element of Placer County Fire Department is they enjoy the benefit of Amador stations, which is a benefit unique to Placer County Fire Department by virtue of its synergies with CAL FIRE. The Amador stations play a great role in reducing the cost per call that, again, our residents enjoy by leveraging state and local resources together in terms of fire service delivery, and those year-round fire services are provided by three stations at a significantly reduced cost. The average cost for a full-service fire station is about $1.5 million. These stations operate at a cost of $800,000 annually for a roughly $3.7 million annual savings, again, to our Placer County taxpayers and residents. With regard to mutual aid, next slide, please. You'll also see that Placer County Fire Department benefits not only our residents and those within the service area of PCFD, but also fire districts throughout Placer County, with a notation here of the 2019 mutual aid responses that CAL FIRE, by virtue of its service depth and capacity, provided to the other fire districts, supporting them in their fire EMS service delivery mission. With regard to those countywide benefits and services provided by PCFD, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Estes to kind of go through, again, some of those ancillary benefits we here in Placer County enjoy by virtue of this partnership.
Thank you, Jane. So one of the things we really enjoy and respect and value about the relationship between the County of Placer and CAL FIRE and the Placer County Fire Department is our depth of resource and the ability to bring, really, a large amount of aligned resources together to accomplish some very, very complex missions and challenges within the county. Our county is extremely diverse. We have some of the most heavily recreated rivers in the northern part of California. Our geography is very unforgiving, from the canyons of the American River drainages to our internal areas like Hidden Falls Regional Park, et cetera, up through Donner Summit and over into the Truckee Basin. We have a tremendous recreation base that visits our county year-round, and the impacts to the fire and emergency medical services in our county is significant with that visitation. So we have, really, three main programs that I wanted to make sure I highlighted right off the bat, and you've heard me talk about these before, but even as of yesterday afternoon with a medical rescue in Hidden Falls Regional Park, our technical rescue team, as of yesterday, was at 112 either swift water or technical rescues performed in the county since the beginning of the calendar year. It's one of the busiest regional teams in our area, and it is supported entirely by the Placer County Fire Department. This last year, through an agreement with the Placer County Sheriff's Office, we entered into a joint venture called the Tactical EMS Program, and the purpose of that is for us to provide advanced life support paramedics in cooperation with the Sheriff's Office set team to provide a high level of protection for those members in high-risk environments. And then for many, many years, in cooperation with County OES, we've provided services for the central hazmat team. As Jane said, we have tremendous, you know, billions of dollars of assessed risks in our county. A lot of that comes on the 80 corridor in the form of not only the interstate, but the UP rail line and the Kinder Morgan Petroleum Pipeline. Hence the reason, or one of the reasons, that we have three hazmat teams in the county: City of Roseville, the Town of Truckee, and the central team, which is hosted by the Placer County Fire Department. In addition to that, we have a robust Fire Prevention Bureau that really benefits from both the county efforts and the state efforts. We do have a county fire marshal and two deputy fire marshal, county fire planners, that make sure we're meeting our federal and state mandates for life safety with new development, and also looking at the opportunities to enhance impact mitigation and support fire and life safety. In alignment with that, on the state side, is our Fire Prevention Bureau, where we employ four peace officers, post-certified fire investigation officers, and we have access to both K-9 resources and arson bomb units just down the hill that we access for Placer County investigations. Our volunteer program, which we really value in the county, is all hosted and administered out of Station 70, and we reach out to all of our partners and our allied agencies that run volunteer programs, so that we try to have a combined and consistent effort in the training of our volunteers and resident firefighters, because many times, those folks become that first level of paid and career firefighters within our system. Our PCFD or Placer County Fire Department radio communication system is supported out of the Grass Valley ECC, and it's something that we are very, very proud of. Like I said, it is one of the five communication centers in Placer County, but it is a fire and EMS emergency command center, period. They do not do any other service, and they are full service. They provide that service for 31 different local government fire departments, including five transport agencies. They provide full-service EMD and dispatch over 45,000 calls a year, and we're very proud of the efforts and fortunate to have them on the west slope of Placer County, where they dispatch for county fire department, the State of California, and the City of Auburn Fire Department. Some of the assets that the county brings to the table in this regional support include a dedicated truck operations company with a staff truck company at Thunder Valley and a cross-staffed truck company in Atwood. We support multiple water rescue programs, including flood rescue in the valley and swift water in the north Auburn area, and we support breathing support and large incident dynamics with water tenders, as well as our urban search and rescue program out of the Thunder Valley Casino, specific to trench and confined space rescue. Our EMS and ALS program management is something we take really serious, and it's another benefit that we gain between the cooperative relationship. Our Training Bureau at Auburn Headquarters incorporates both a paramedic coordinator, as well as a full-time battalion chief, and two captains that coordinate all training for the Placer County Fire Department. And we also provide Region 4 dispatching out of the Grass Valley Emergency Command Center, which, in alignment with our local government cooperators in the county, that OES mutual aid system relies on a coordination center, and Grass Valley provides that for 11 counties around northern California, so that we have access back and forth through that important mutual aid system. One of the things that Jane mentioned earlier was some of the target hazards in Placer County, and Placer County has more habitable structures within the state responsibility area than any other county in the state of California, and that's something we take very serious in the relationship with the State of California and having fiscal and jurisdictional authority and responsibility for state wildland fires, and then having that impact from structures in the SRA, having that relationship, the command and control and the dispatch services out of Grass Valley, and not having any delay in responses in getting all the resources on scene, regardless of the patch on the side of the door, is one of my main concerns. And one of the things I was really proud of working with you all on in the last year or so was taking that beyond our state responsibility area lines within the Placer County Fire Department, and really enhancing that mutual aid and auto aid services from our depth of resource on the wildland side into the local areas and the valley floor of Placer County, where ironically, we have had more acres burned in Placer County in the local responsibility area side than on state responsibility area side. So it is, even though it's out of the SRA, it is a real target hazard in the valley floor for wildland fires. As you can see on the next map, our fire department is kind of a culmination of some special districts that have come into the county fire department, and some responsibilities that the county has had for many, many years. And really, it dates back probably earliest to the 1950s in what's called Western Placer and the valley floor, where we have had a paid and career presence in the North Lincoln area for decades. The next thing to kind of morph in was the 80 corridor and the advent of the Amador program, which Jane talked about. That program is something that is specific to the relationship with CAL FIRE in the county, and it's something we use all over the state of California. It enhances areas where the state has a fire station already and maximizes that ability. We actually provide all three stations for $800,000 a year, so, you know, a little bit over $200,000 or so per year, per fire station for that two-person staffing year-round in that county fire department mission. As you look back into the western end of the county, you see that in 2001, the Dry Creek Fire Protection District; in 2004, the Sunset Industrial Area, including Thunder Valley Casino; and in 2006, the Placer Consolidated Fire Protection District, all came into the county fire department to be part of our system. The Amador corridor alone accounts for about 1/3 of our call volume and incorporates those three huge target hazards, but that North Auburn-Ofer corridor, what used to be the Placer Consolidated Fire Protection District, is certainly our heaviest call volume and has increased approximately 4% to 5% per year in demands for services as the population and commercial density has grown. Next slide. So as we talked a little bit about in the Standards of Cover, we do have varying levels of service, and some of that is because of the culmination of how the county fire department came to be, and that perfectly explains why the importance of that standard cover is there, to align things and bring consistency to the system. We do have volunteer ranks, mostly in Western Placer, that have made up the small communities of Page and Thermalands and Sheridan, and have all come together. They are serviced by a career fire station out of North Lincoln, but those volunteer assets are still very, very important to us. But there is inconsistency between career and volunteer. There's inconsistency between basic life support and advanced life support, even within our own system, and the station staffing levels from 2, 3, and 4 is inconsistent across our system. So that's one of our key concerns. The second and third are inadequate equipment replacement and substandard facilities maintenance. And really, this is, you know, in the cooperative agreement, the county is responsible and works with us to enhance and provide that continuing equipment replacement and capital improvement to our facilities. And it's something that has been a challenge, that we've identified as a priority to work on in the future, so that we're not doing these in lump-sum purchases, but we have an actual line-item type of process that we're looking at. And then obviously, we need to look at that deficit spending as those increases in services and demand for services has increased 4% to 5% per year, but the revenue generation has not followed. On the next slide is a better description of how you see those zones of benefit, of what they contribute to, and what their service levels are. The Fire Control Fund, which services that 80 corridor, Stations 1030 and 33, which are those Amador stations, that's Bowman, Colfax, and Alta, respectively, and then Station 70 is a county fire station out of North Lincoln. So we have basically four career fire stations, one county career, three state career, but even within that system, we have a combination of BLS and ALS, and we're working really hard on a very easy solution to bring that Station 70 up to full-time ALS this year. And then as you move through Dry Creek and North Auburn-Ofer, you see that there's a career-volunteer combination, and they're BLS services, and they maintain that two-person staffing. The odd figure in this is the Sunset Industrial Area, which, under contract with Thunder Valley, required, because of the high-rise standard operating plan and high-rise requirements for Thunder Valley, required three-person paramedic engine company and four-person paramedic truck company, which we maintain there seven days a week, 24 hours a day. I know most of you are familiar, in general, with the difference between basic life support and advanced life support, but it truly is the standard of the industry. CAL FIRE is the largest employer of paramedics in the state of California. We have over 800 working within the ranks through cooperative fire agreements all over the state of California, and it truly is the standard of the industry, and I believe it's an easy fix for us and a tremendous upgrade in services for the citizens of Placer County within our jurisdictional authority. And at base level, the biggest difference between it is that, versus stabilizing and transporting in a basic life support environment, you are treating with advanced airway treatments and the use of narcotics to treat critical patients in the field. As you can see on the next slide, our current level of service is 2O BLS. We do run an Expanded Scope Program, which gives us all of our EMTs, which we are 100% EMT across the BLS system. With Expanded Scope, it gives us the ability to prescribe some levels of narcotics and some airway interventions in the advanced scope. But, you know, what this really brings us by increasing to ALS, and ultimately, a level of two-person to three-person per-engine staffing, obviously, there's greater efficiency in the fire and EMS system, and the NFPA produces numbers about fire-ground efficiency, but I would say it's more about the draw on the system. When, you know, every single call that we have outside of an in-house medical aid requires usually calling on one of our allied usually calling on one of our allied partners or them calling on us. We have a very, very robust mutual aid system in this county and I believe in that. It's the right thing to do to get the best service to the front door of that person who's calling nine-one-one regardless of the patch on the door, whether it's the city of Roseville, the town of Truckee, or a district within the county fire department's borders. We have to maintain that mutual aid commitment. And providing ALS and providing a consistent level of service gets us closer to that. Certainly, an increased safety to our firefighters out there is gained by that increased staffing level. Better health outcomes with ALS is a non-starter. I mean, that, that's absolutely factually based, that you will have better health outcomes to our constituents and to our patients with advanced life support and improved property conservation with a more aggressive and more robust fire attack. We do have deficit spending in our zones of benefits, specifically Dry Creek, north Auburn OFER, and, and Western Placer and Sunset. And we need, we need to look at those direct charges not covering the current service costs. With that, we have inadequate funding for equipment replacement and historically, a substandard facilities maintenance. And we are working on those in priority order. One of the things I'm really proud about this year is, as of last week, we're able to bring in the neighborhood of about three-quarters of a million dollars in, back into the county through our relationship utilizing county equipment and personnel to backstaff our state stations as we've seen this commitment to the regional and state service across the last two months. You know, some of my partners back in the room here also contributed those same things to the state and regional system, and we could not do it alone. No one can do it alone. And when the state gets really drawn down and we rely on those local government assets to cover our state stations, it's fully reimbursable. And we reimburse at a local level and it can be worth a lot of revenue generation to help with things like equipment replacement back into the system. So with that, I appreciate your time and I'll turn it back over to Jane.
Great. This brings us full circle to the future Placer County Fire Department alternatives we mentioned earlier in the presentation. It's against this patchwork of differing service models, varying degrees of fiscal health, and operating costs that we crafted the alternatives for the board's consideration. They were informed by the standards of cover study and the Goodwin fiscal work and crafted to address, again, these multiple challenges we face of closing our existing funding gap, addressing deficient equipment and facility needs, and standardizing for industry best practices, bringing our services up to par when it comes to advanced life support, again, and the staffing level per apparatus that guarantees better health and fire outcomes. Please note the color coding convention that we've used on this slide because it carries through the next few slides. Again, scenario one in blue to simply close our current level of service funding gap. Scenario two in red to not only do that, but address those deficient equipment and facilities needs, which do impact service delivery. Scenario three A in green to layer on the advanced life support. The criticality of having services be able to deliver critical medical intervention versus simply stabilize a patient for transport cannot be understated. And scenario three B in purple to do all of the above, but also bring up our staffing levels to three persons per apparatus consistent with industry best practices and standards. Next slide, please. Here, what we've depicted is essentially remembering that color-coded convention for each of the alternatives, the gaps that we see for the current fiscal year into the future to fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five. The graphic is easy to give you a sense of for each of the alternatives, what our gap would be, again, under those various service alternatives. Next slide. And here are the numbers themselves, again, for each of those four color-coded alternatives, what we see as our current beginning balance for the Placer County Fire Department, operating surplus or deficit, and the ending balance that then carries over into the next fiscal year. So you can see how these numbers are compounding over time. Next slide. This is where we get to pocketbook impacts. We've talked a lot about the seven zones of benefit that comprise the Placer County Fire Department. What we show here are essentially in orange, what folks in the zones are paying now. The first tranche of colored bars reflects the added amount that would be required to their annual charge to bring them up to that color-coded service level with the cumulative down below, which is the orange line up above what they're paying now, plus the middle of the page colored bars, the added increment for the total below as to how much charges would need to increase for those various zones of benefit for those associated service levels. Next slide, please. As you can see, nominally, the increase is not that significant to layer on, again, all of these improvements to close the gap, to address deficient equipment and facility needs, to add advanced life support services, and again, that standardized staffing of three persons per apparatus depicted in the colors noted here. You'll note earlier in the presentation, we mentioned that Placer County residents and taxpayers enjoy the fourth lowest cost per call in the Placer, in all of Placer County by virtue of the partnership with Placer County Fire Department. You'll see here, not only are we the lowest today in blue, but even if we layer on these service improvements, we still remain in that fourth lowest competitive position vis-a-vis other districts throughout Placer County. Which brings us, next slide, to the alternatives before you for consideration. They're really quite straightforward. Maintaining the status quo means we either have to, as a county, fund Placer County Fire Department to a greater degree in order to address that fiscal gap or to reduce services commensurately. Alternatively, we could work the legacy zone work, the legacy zone patchwork that we have inherited over time, that we've assumed into Placer County Fire Department over time to increase those charges, again, to close that fiscal gap and address the service deficiencies by bringing them up to industry best practices for fire and emergency services. Or lastly, a new approach, a community facilities district, which Susan Goodwin is here to speak to, really evolving our legacy zone of benefit model to something that more so keeps pace with the fiscal and service challenges of today's fire and EMS service and better keep pace with cost over time. The first alternative, again, the status quo for fire and emergency services. We need to increase the rate at which we fund Placer County Fire Department for fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two. We've been spending down reserves, but we're starting to get to the point where those curves cross and it will entail either funding them at a greater level or reducing services commensurately to live within the current spending levels that we have with our current zone of benefit structure or other Placer County Fire Department alternatives, which the chief could certainly speak to if there were other alternatives that might help us in closing that gap. Next slide. We could work the legacy patchwork. Again, the orange or somewhat yellow is what folks are paying today and those would need to be increased for the various service alternatives to, again, address all of the needs that we've talked about, about bringing our services up to standard. Or I'll turn it over to Susan Goodwin to kind of walk through the community facilities district approach, again, which is a new way of bringing our fire service delivery system into the twenty-first century in keeping with today's costs.
Thank you, Jane. Members of the board, thank you for your time today. I'm gonna consolidate a, what is sometimes a full-day seminar on Melrose into two slides in five minutes. I'm gonna talk briefly first about CFDs that you guys are used to seeing. You guys have approved Community Facilities District, CFD, that is also Melrose District, as many people know it. Henry Mello and Mike Ruse is where that name came from. It is the single most effective funding tool in the state of California. Taxpayers may not like it, but it is the only, one of the only mechanisms available to fund public infrastructure and now a growing trend to fund public services. The county has made use of this tool, Placer Vineyards, Riolo Vineyards, Bickford Ranch is, is under construction at the moment. Those are what you see more traditionally as CFDs for new development. That's when a landowner has a condition to provide infrastructure and provide service funding. And the, when the CFD is formed, it's a landowner election, that's undeveloped property with no registered voters on it. This is what you've seen come forward with new development projects in Placer County in the, in the past. In those landowners' elect- in the landowner elections, each landowner gets one vote per acre or portion of acre that they own. It is a two-thirds vote based on acreage in the landowner elections. The maximum special tax is determined generally, when these are formed, determined on a project-by-project basis. That's how it was done with Placer Vineyards, Riolo Vineyards, and now with Bickford Ranch coming through. You saw the bars at six-eighty-five for, per unit for Bickford Ranch. That is the project-specific cost. Once a CFD is formed, property can annex in. If it's undeveloped property, it's very simple and it's an accelerated process that's provided to annex property into the CFD and add a special tax for that new property. And then the tax is disclosed to homebuyers when the home is purchased. Technically, it's supposed to be when they're in the sales office considering that purchase, but then there's also documents that are signed as part of the escrow process. Next slide. So it is a completely different process when you're talking about forming a community facilities district for existing development. So if we were talking about CFDs for one or more of the legacy zones of benefit to participate in, it immediately switches over as soon as there's more than eleven registered voters in the geographic area, it becomes a vote of the registered voters. There's no landowner vote at that point in time. It's still a two-thirds vote. The, each registered voter gets one vote and the votes that are returned, two-thirds of those have to be in favor of forming the district. The CFD can include either one project at the start and other projects could annex in, also with a registered voter election, or the CFD could be formed to include multiple projects in the CFD from the start. There can be a single CFD with a tax per unit that's the same across the board. This, Melrose does not require a benefit finding, which is what makes it the tool that's used for public safety. Fire and police and sheriff are too general a benefit type of service to try to do traditional assessment districts anymore. So we're finding Melrose to be the, the tool that's used. So multiple projects can be put into one district. They could all pay the same rate per unit or per acre, or you could have separate tax zones that have different rates within those zones to pay both on a residential or non-residential basis. The boundaries of the CFD do not need to be contiguous. So you could pick up some or multiple, I mean, one or multiple zones of benefit. They do not need to be next to each other because there is no finding of benefit required. They can, you can jump and have sort of a Swiss cheese boundary in a CFD. The process to annex into a registered voter CFD, if there are registered voters in that annexation area, is virtually the same process as forming the CFD in the first place. It's two board meetings, it's a public hearing, it's an election of the registered voters. So you can either do it at the start, do it annexations, or have separate CFDs for each project that you want to include and have separate registered votes for each of those. And with that, I'll turn it back to Jane.
Thank you. Which brings us really to turning over the conversation to the board. We've laid out some alternatives to address what we see as the service and fiscal challenges for the service, the fire service delivery we hope to be able to offer our residents today. But the choice is yours in terms of the direction you want to provide to staff in terms of steps to achieve this more sustainable future for these critical emergency services. I fully expect you'll hear from your board colleagues who've been immersed in this work over the last year-plus of Supervisors Holm and Gustafson, and we certainly understand that part of those next steps involves outreach to develop the consensus to close the fiscal gaps because any and all of these alternatives require a partnership with those that we serve and involving them in the conversation as we try and develop a consensus around a solution to address these very issues. We would then follow up with the board, following that public process for, to inform your future policy direction, to implement an action plan, again, towards a more sustainable future for these critical fire and emergency life services. So with that, happy to answer questions. Turn it over to the board and certainly pending your questions, I'll try and triage them to our panel if needed.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. Let's, let's start with questions from our, my colleagues. And that's my line. Hold on a second. Supervisor Holm.
Thank you. Jane, Becky, Chief Esses, I've been living with this for over two years and it's amazing how far we've gone. And at this point, seeing how it's closed, I've looked at this thing about ten times in the last two weeks and it's just great. And Sarah Poindexter, thank you as well. It's just great work. We finally are at this point. At the end of the day, we're in the same position that a lot of the special districts are. The revenues never keep up with expenses. And so that's where we are here today, to find out a way to do that. There's a question I had on slide number eight regarding bullet number two, two-point-four annual increase in direct charge revenues for applicable zones of benefits. These are the zones of benefits that have an inflator that goes in every year, is that what that's means, the cost of living?
That's correct. Some of the zones do have an inflator, some do not.
Yeah. Like north Auburn OFER has not. And then the zone, zone of benefit one-thirty-seven, I don't see a direct charge. That's, I think Christian Valley area, is that?
I believe you're referring to the ghost zone. We call it the ghost zone. There's no fire stations in that area right now, and so there's no revenue being drawn from that area other than what is going into the Fire Control Fund.
But they still receive service?
Correct.
And so is that provided by Western County Fire or is it provided by CAL FIRE?
Yeah, the majority, there is a small section on the top end of Christian Valley that we would receive mutual aid from Placer Hills Fire Protection District, but the vast majority of that in the forty-nine corridor is serviced by Atwood, Placer County Fire Department.
So is there a possibility of some revenue coming from that ghost zone? Is that, is that feasible? Is that something? Well, we probably shouldn't take a look at that. Having lived this for a long, long time and seeing the four options that we have, I, you know, we have to go with three B because if we go with any of the other options, we're gonna be back here again with the same issue. And so that's, that's just my comments right now. I'd like to hear from my colleagues and see where.
Thank you, Supervisor Holm. You know, I have a couple of questions to understand a few things. First of all, for ALS, for that type of service, do you need to have three personnel to a unit in order to provide that?
No. No, Supervisor, they're really, they're kind of totally separate and you don't need every single person on that piece of apparatus to be a paramedic.
So I, I understand the need to move from two to three. They're not mutually exclusive, right? So right now, CAL FIRE is providing basic life support, not advanced life support. My understanding is that's training, right? So people have to be trained to be a paramedic, correct? Is that an issue of not having enough funds to provide the training so that our firefighters can provide advanced life? Why are, why are we currently not providing it?
So that's a great question. And so, yes, they are, they really have nothing to do with each other. I mean, the staffing level on a piece of apparatus is purely about the staffing level to meet all myriads of mitigating emergencies. Specific to advanced life support, a paramedic on an engine company, what we would call an assessment engine company, it only requires one paramedic, whether it's two people, three people, or four people. And, and we would not be training our people. We, we have classifications within our system. They're either firefighter-two paramedic or firefighter-two, engineer-paramedic, engineer, et cetera, et cetera. Over the culmination of all these different service models within the Placer County Fire Department, the county has basically a menu to choose from. If, if, if the board decides that they want ALS across one hundred percent of the Placer County Fire Department, it's simply just an adjustment of those classifications. And then through attrition, as people move in and out, we just backfill with paramedics. Our paramedic list is very, very robust and deep. And in fact, we have a lot of paramedics working in our unit right now. They're just not working in a paramedic classification. I have a paramedic working at Station Seventy. He just is not working in a paramedic classification because the county, it, the county hasn't chosen to activate that classification.
The funding isn't there to provide the ALS?
Correct.
So if there was funding, then it could be provided?
Absolutely.
So not about trade, it's about bringing the right people in?
Yep.
Okay. So two different issues, ALS versus two- Okay. So two different issues, ALS versus two to three?
Yep.
That's helpful. Thank you. And I take it there are other Cal Fire stations in other parts of the state of California that have three personnel per, per unit or?
Yes, yes.
Truck, what do you call it?
Apparatus.
Per apparatus, thank you. Okay. So there are other Cal Fire stations that have three people per apparatus. It's just that we don't have the funding in our area to provide that.
Yeah, in some areas. Like all of our state fire engines are minimum three person.
So up in the Amador, the, the stations that are funded via the state?
Yep.
And partially through the county?
Yep.
Right? Those have three personnel per apparatus?
During, during declared fire season, they have three person because that's the state standard. During the county funded period, they have two people, minimum two. But typically, because of our depth of resource, we usually staff them with three, but they're only required to have two.
Okay, thank you. And then this is sort of a, a one-off question, but I saw, the city of Roseville is choosing to do this. It might have to do with the paramedics, right?
Yep.
And so it came up before the city of Roseville, a number of years ago, they said no, but the city of Roseville is now, the fire department is going to be charging insurance companies for the city going out and providing advanced life services, right? Providing that right there show up, take care of the medical emergency.
Right.
And that's a trend happening in other fire departments and municipalities. If Cal Fire, if we were to move to having ALS in our service jurisdiction, could we then look at that model of going in and asking insurance companies to provide their fair share for us taking care of that patient?
Potentially in certain areas, but specific to Roseville and where that's happened over in the East Bay, it has to do with the relationship between private ambulance providers and the ALS fire department provider. And if, and if there is an inability for a private ambulance provider to meet a compliance that is required by that EMSA authority, then the ALS provider on the fire department side can charge that as the ALS provider. Typically where that happens, you have to be in an urban service delivery model, which has the lowest amount of response time. And oftentimes, the private ambulance company cannot meet that response time that the fire department can. In our areas, generally speaking, outside of North Auburn Ofer, we tend to be in more of the suburban or rural response model. So it's a little tougher to meet some of those time constraints, but it certainly is an option.
Well, and as areas become a little bit more dense?
Correct.
It could be an opportunity to have some additional cost recovery.
Yep.
So I, that's helpful to understand that in an area like Roseville, Rockland, where they have a, well, their fire, the fire apparatus gets there faster sometimes?
Than the ambulance.
Than the ambulance.
That's correct.
But in our experience here in more of the rural area, the ambulance arrives prior to the firefighter.
There's probably just not that consistency of them always getting that scene within that two to three minute period where an ambulance may be delayed because of a transport to the hospital or, or other factors.
Great, thank you. That is very helpful. Those are the questions I have. Let's see, I see somebody else, which is Supervisor Gustafson.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to thank staff as well. You all have been extremely patient through this process, bringing me up to speed on such a complicated formula. And for those at the far end of the county, on either end, they might not understand the complexity that we were dealing with. I certainly didn't coming into this seat. So I really appreciate that. And especially my colleague Supervisor Holmes, who added me on the hand a few times to let me know that it was confusing and it was a long history. You know, we have talked quite a bit in the ad hoc committee, and I know we didn't finalize all these numbers. But Chief, I wanted to talk to you a little bit more about the regional costs because North Auburn Ofer, while it has the highest call volume, is also responding to tremendous call volume based on I-80, based on the technical rescues, based on a lot of those things. And I asked, I know just a week ago, whether or not you could pull together some numbers that might help us look at that deficit in some of these areas as more a county-wide benefit because of those calls. And Hidden Falls, I mean, that's a county facility if there's an incident there. Who's responsible? That zone of benefit or the broader group? So do you have any?
Right, right now-
Call volume or data on that?
Yeah, we did, we did pull some rough numbers and it's, it's right in the neighborhood of about 3.6 to 3.8 million dollars a year that we, you know, when we try to put together personnel costs associated with apparatus replacement and what the zones of benefit pay into all the different impacts, there is a significant amount in, well in excess of $3 million a year that I believe is, is supporting resources that are serving a more regional area. And, and when we look at North Auburn Ofer in particular, you know, they are servicing the hazmat team. They are hosting and servicing the majority of the TMS team, and they are the host for the TRT, which has a relatively high call volume, especially in the light of COVID and what we've seen this last 12 months. And, and we don't expect that to necessarily slow down into the future. The Sunset Industrial Area certainly composes not only the USAR program down there, but it is a truck, a dedicated staff truck company that, that provides a first due truck company to their neighboring cities and, and assists with both City of Rockland and Roseville in those dense commercial environments. And, and really, quite honestly, the, the corridor stations, the Amador stations, like I said, they account for a third of the call volume and they're providing not only mutual aid, but, but really their entire response area is comprised outside of those communities that are, that are stretched up and down the 80 corridor and around Bowman. But when you think about the transient traffic that travels Interstate 80 on any given day, there's been, I've heard estimates of somewhere between 22 and 24,000 vehicles of commerce that pass by our Auburn headquarters every 24 hours. And so if you think about the impact of that, if, if the highway shut down or the UP rail line is affected, and so those call volumes are, are, are picked up by those Amador stations primarily.
Thank you. And, and I think that just leads to how, how you would shape the various funding mechanisms. And certainly we've talked about melloruse and potentially some sort of parcel tax, but you know, how we look at, how we solve the deficit is going to be multifunctioning in my mind. And I think the complexity, you know, I've come to recognize, we consolidated North Tahoe and Tahoe City Fire Department 25 years ago, I want to say, maybe 30 years ago. Consolidations of smaller districts, whether it's water and sewer where I came from, or consolidations with, in public safety are, are a necessity because the public's expectation for higher and higher levels of professionalism and experience is expected. When you're driving up and down, I never knew that I might have only BLS here as I'm driving up and down the corridor. I'm used to having an ALS level of service, but I also pay a supplemental tax and revenues to the local fire district in Tahoe. So I think there's a combination of issues that the ad hoc is grappling with. We wanted to get it before the rest of the board to get some levels of direction, but by no means do we have the final solution today. We've identified a lot of the issues. I think we still have more questions to ask. And as I look at a variety of other funding, potential other funding sources that we need to pursue and think about, I have questions, as I've mentioned before, on the sales tax. While it's not allowed sub-countywide, there has been special legislation for transportation on one part of our county. Should, is that a potential revenue stream that we can look at for those regional benefits? Because that really does then allow visitors and others to potentially fund, help fund the services that they enjoy when they're in a community. That would require special legislation, may not be possible, but it's certainly one of those items that we can look at. And when we look at visitor expenses, I know we've had pitches from North Tahoe Fire on TOT revenues. And so again, kind of looking at all the funding mechanisms that are available through the county or through special mechanisms. So I think we, we have quite a bit more work to do. And, and one of the concepts that Supervisor Holmes and I talked about is establishing some sort of a committee that would allow us to have representatives, not only with Jim and I serving on it, but also from the various zones of benefit. So we really get them engaged with one member from each of the zones to, as a leader of their community to work with us on how, how we structure this. Because obviously, when you start looking at consolidations, trying to have a seamless manner in which people pay into the system would, could be a huge benefit. May not work, may have to keep it individual, but you know, looking at those sorts of areas. So I just wanted to, to bring that up with the board as well because I think there's a lot more to do, but we've come a long way in really identifying a lot of these issues. And, and how we move forward is, is, you know, what we're here to talk about today. Thanks.
Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, let me follow up on Supervisor Gustafson's comments. Having worked with the Loomis Fire Protection District with a successful parcel tax, Newcastle Fire District, same thing, and Penrith Fire District, it was community members, community leaders, not necessarily board members of the fire district, not necessarily firefighters, but community leaders that you got in and explained, people that had trust of the community and got them to work. And so that's how we have to do this on each zone of benefit. The challenge is how do we bring them all together? And that's probably something that you, you'll have to help us with. But again, we have to reach out to the community leaders and show them, and that's what, one of the reasons why we're having this discussion. We need to show them where, where the shortfall is. You know, when we talk about Station 180, the busiest station in Placer County, we have to remember that there are probably six mobile home parks there with seniors. We have all these assisted living areas there and Highway 49, which is a very busy highway. And having run a business right on Highway 49, I could see where those fire trucks are going. They're going to the mobile home park or up, up by the hospital or out on, right on Highway 49 or in some of these county roads. So that's, that's a challenge before us. I think the key is, North Auburn Ofer is the key because they have the lowest $48 parcel, parcel tax, which we put in. I was on that board back in the early part of the 90s. And I think costs have gone up since then. So we have to look at, look at that and how can we, but we have to reach out to the communities and say, this is where we're at and the level of service that you should expect, this is what it's going to cost.
Well, and, and just to follow up on that, if I could only, the, really identifying what the, what is the fair charge? Should they be covering Hidden Falls if we have a regional park that we've identified as a Placer County regional park? Should North Auburn Ofer pay for that or not? You know, should that be all the residents of Placer County? Same with the regional benefits and canyon rescues. Who, who should be helping with those technical rescue teams in those areas? So, so I think the next level of detail would come back to the board, in my mind, to the full board, with some more work on what, what is truly equitable to those individuals and what should the county wide funds be used for versus the individual parcels?
I have another question, which was, I think you mentioned that a, a CFD would, for fire services, you wouldn't actually have to have a direct correlation, correct?
Not a direct benefit.
Not a direct benefit.
Exactly.
So as we were looking at the amount that each zone of benefit is paying, some are paying, Bickford's got, it's not yet built, but 685 some odd dollars, something like that. Dry Creek, 210, North Auburn in the 48, right? So huge difference in the amount that each homeowner is paying. And as we talk about this, right, somebody to choose to increase their taxes by two times, four, five times is a huge lift. And, and I think to your point of how do you pull out what's regional? You know, what are, what are we all paying for? What are the services we're all paying for, I think is, is very important. And how we go about this because, you know, what does the county pay for regional benefit versus our individual property owners? Because asking people to, you've been through these parcel taxes, Jim, but how many times did it take to get them approved?
For sale, they never gave up.
Right. So it's a, it's a very huge lift. Let's, let's see Supervisor Euler?
Thank you. So I'm in an interesting position in this conversation because on the one hand, my district receives all of the service from either South Placer Fire or the city of Roseville, and we don't have any of them. But conversely, to the extent that the general fund is subsidizing service, my district is the most impacted because we're covered by paying our, for our fire service through other means. So obviously, a keen interest in seeing a resolution to this conversation at some point. I think we need to be very careful as, as, as the chief has identified in terms of the mutual aid, the overlapping service when we start talking about things like the regional park. Of course, my district, the most used state park in the state park system, Folsom Lake, main access right through Granite Bay, and it's South Placer Fire, who provides almost all of the response into the Folsom Lake State Park area, at least on the Placer County side. Obviously, City of Folsom and, and Eldorado County take care on their side. And we that pay for South Placer Fire service basically just absorb that cost. The folks at the South Placer Fire have come to me on numerous times, on numerous occasions, to ask about the, the property tax in lieu, to see if the county is willing to share that with them because of the service they provide. But of course, we know that dollar amount is fairly de minimis anyway. So throughout our park system, whether it's a county park, our state parks, our federal lands, which make up a huge portion of our, our real estate here in this county, we are all paying for service that's being delivered to all of us as county residents when we go to Folsom Lake or regional or up to Tahoe.
Thank you. Thank you for throwing that one in.
Yeah. And, and, and we're also all paying for the out of county residents, you know, that, that come in and enjoy what it is that we provide. So I know there's a very active conversation going on right now around the cost associated providing services to people who might be using our regional park that we are providing. But rest assured, there have been over the years, a, a number of, of costs, a number of, a significant amount of money that gets spent on providing recreational services to folks coming into our county for other areas as opposed to just the regional park.
Supervisor Euler, for just a point of comparison, do you know what the parcel tax is in your, in that fire district?
I would say we're about $218 a year in, in South Placer, somewhere in that neighborhood.
I think Sarah's got it right here.
Which just helps to have a comparison of what other residents are paying.
I should have looked at my property tax bill before coming up here. I could have told you. For South Placer Fire.
I believe it's 342.
Oh.
Yeah. And we're, and North Tahoe is about 300.
Okay. So we're, we're, we're paying more than I thought we were.
Well, and I, I think that's actually helpful to be aware of. I think your point is well taken, right? That, that fire district, those residents are paying for service and they're taking care of an area where people come and recreate.
Right.
And that happens up in Tahoe.
Well, not, not only the folks coming to recreate, but as we all know, the main connector between South Placer, Roseville, Rockland, and then Eldorado County, Sacramento County, Folsom, is that Douglas Auburn-Folsom corridor that we've, you know, enhanced and made the main connection. And we've got vehicles rolling in there all the time to various incidents that happen along those lines as we have the residents living in Folsom, working in Rockland, and vice versa. So, yeah. So, yeah, we can't be as myopic in this as certain interests might like us to be. We've got to understand the nature of that, the mutual aid service, and how that does apply beyond just fire.
Right, and I don't disagree with that. I think in trying to identify the regional sources, you know, my thinking was, that could apply countywide. Countywide funds should be used countywide, and it may end up assisting in other districts and other opportunities as well. You know, it, the challenge we have is, and I applaud Supervisor Holmes' optimism, it's hard for voters to vote for the county to give the county more money. And a two-thirds for a county versus a special district who can brown out their station, or start shutting down services, and having kind of that other, and I just don't see the appetite on any of our parts to play that game with the county's resources, right? To say that we'll shut it down. But we do have to get to some equitable solution, and that I'm absolutely committed to. And so what are the combinations of how we get there and how we solve that problem? And maybe there's some other revenues that we haven't really fully discussed yet on special legislation, on sales tax, that would help North Auburn especially, where we see major generators of that, if that's an opportunity. Especially if the City of Auburn's sales tax moves forward. Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, I just want to follow up on Supervisor Yuler's district that gets exceptional service from South Placer. They also have advanced life support, and they do ambulance service. So that's another part of that cost that's rolled in. You're getting a pretty good deal.
Yeah, I agree. I think they contract with AMR within the district. They don't provide their own ambulance. They have their EMT.
No, they do have their own ambulance provisions under 201 rights. They're an exclusive provider, so they provide both. South Placer provides both paramedic engine companies and ambulance transport systems, which is a whole nother discussion, because there's the billing and reimbursement from ambulance transport and that.
Because the last two incidents I was at, I saw AMR roll out.
Very possible. I mean, it's, you know, the ambulance services are a splintered system as well, and if the South Placer units were committed, it could have been a...
Because I've only seen them with their EMT trucks and not their own equipped ambulances. Well, that was the last two incidents I was at, which I...
Well, as we debate this issue, I'm really cognizant of looking at whether it's Placer Hills or Forest Hill, and our other, and City of Colfax rolls into this discussion. You know, how we set up a model that others can join if they choose to, or we can contract for services, or we can save money to the taxpayers and look at providing enhanced services. So I think that's, you know, that's my thinking, because I do think if, not if we look at tomorrow, but if we look at 20 years from now, how much further we're going to go in the idea of streamlining some of these services for the public.
Sure.
So set up a model now that we may not use for 10 or 20 years. But I benefited from being here from the leadership of board members who put a lot of money aside and addressed OPEB and addressed some of the other issues for this county, because you had vision. And I just would want us, in this discussion, to really be thinking long-term and visionary in how we solve the issues.
So as far as countywide resources, certainly the smaller districts like Penrin and Newcastle are responding on I-80 all the time.
Yeah.
And they're not getting, you know, they might try to bill for some of that service, but very little of that comes back.
Right.
Is that what you're thinking about, of those kinds of?
Yeah, I think we have to have all of that discussion, is how countywide funds can assist in getting to a model that really is the best model moving forward for fire service. It is the most critical issue in my district, and I think throughout California right now, is fire.
Right.
And how we set this up to be successful long-term, to me, is far more important than what we do tomorrow. It's really setting us up for success in the future than what is the right solution. And other counties have approached it in different manners, and looking at those, and looking at those models, and moving forward that way.
Any comments?
Yeah, just over the years, and I've been involved with fire service as an elected official for, no, 30 years. My number one comment, anybody that snores me, I said, any movement, any change in fire service is glacial. It just takes time. It took us two years to get here where we're at. And this is a very important point, because now we can reach out to the community, and we have a path that show them where we're at and how we need, where we need to go. And so this is very important, and so I appreciate the board's participation.
Thank you. Let's see, I think probably appropriate for us to take some public comments. So folks who are out there who have, I know we've got some folks from Forest Hill, other fire districts, if you've got questions that you would like to pose, or some comments, we'd be happy to have you do so at this time. So if you, you're welcome to stand up. It looks like there's a podium right there that you can come up to. Just listening and absorbing.
Hello. I've come before the board before.
Hi, your name, sir?
Oh, Tim Emick, District 2 resident. And I've come before the board before to talk about fire service and the impacts of it on the Hidden Falls and all that stuff. But today, I just want, it really feels good just to hear support for fire service coming from the board. I've worked at Station 70. I don't work for the county anymore, I don't work for Cal Fire anymore. But I have worked at Station 70 as that, I actually started up the ALS program down there. And I've seen what two people on an engine can do. I work on a three-person engine company now, and I've been on a lot of calls where it's just two of us, and I'm the paramedic, and I could be working with somebody that doesn't always work in an ALS function. So it's a lot of stress and a lot of demand on the one paramedic. The 3-0, I know, chief, very well spoken, and I agree, 3-0 and ALS doesn't have to be connected, but I'm telling, I'm here to tell you that when you have to go on a code and somebody's family member is laying there pulseless and apneic, and you're asking the family member to come in and do CPR, it's traumatizing on not just the resident, on your fire staff that works for you guys, and the, sorry, I'm a sore nerve.
We won't bite, I promise.
But the, I mean, it's not to traumatize, but post-traumatic stress is a thing. Like, I feel horrible about asking those people to go to do stuff like that. So the 3-0 and the ALS is not necessarily connected, but it is. It's, 3-0 is absolutely the standard. It is both going to get you a more aggressive fire attack, it's going to save way more property, and it's going to save lives. And I can go through, I can go through examples of that, that I've had to live through and stuff, but it's really refreshing to see you guys supporting and acknowledging that our fire services, it does need improved. We do need ALS. We do need three people on an engine. We shouldn't have one engine that covers 90 square miles with potential volunteers showing up. So thank you, guys. I appreciate it, and very good job on the presentation.
Thank you for your comment. Appreciate that very much. Other comments from our public? All right, well, we'll close public, go ahead, Jane. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Jane Wurst. And I just, in reading some of the materials before the meeting today and hearing the presentation, I didn't hear any mention of, when you talk about revenue shortfalls, how the COVID economic fallout is factored into this. I think we all realize that for at least a few years, it will be an issue economically. And so that was, that is question one, which I'll pose both questions real quickly. The other question is, when you were talking about the MELRUS funding, and this term I've heard for years and years, I'm not that, I'm old enough that I've heard it a lot, but I don't understand it. And did you say that if you were charged through MELRUS, that it is by the number of acres you own?
The tax formula can be whatever everyone agrees it should be. Generally, for fire, because it's based on calls, which is based on people, most of my fire CFDs are per unit, per unit taxes, sometimes more for the larger units, less for the smaller units, or more for single-family detached, less for, you know, affordable units, let's say.
Units, though, as structures?
Units, yeah, yeah, sorry, meaning residential units, yeah.
But it's not based on acreage that you own?
Generally not.
Okay.
But it can be. There's no legal formula set forth in the law.
Okay, so then, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then just my other question about the COVID economic issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane, appreciate that.
Pardon me, I can answer that one. Jane, we're going to have a budget workshop next month that'll address some of those issues about the effect COVID's had on us. And then, years ago, you could have a benefit assessment, which would be whoever owned the most property had the most votes. That's gone, we can't do that anymore. When we passed the $48 a year back in 1992, I think, that was before Prop 218. Prop 218 took the taxing authority away from the elected body and gave it to the people. And that's why it's so difficult to get two-thirds. It's hard enough with five members to get two-thirds sometimes. But to go out to the electorate and try to get two-thirds, explain it to them and get two-thirds, that's the big challenge.
I have a quick question, and it just came to my mind, I think it was Tim was making a comment. So City of Roseville has three people per apparatus, four on a ladder truck. Same with Rockland, they have three. South Placer has three. So most of the other jurisdictions have three, probably Metro, Sac Metro has three. But we're at two people per apparatus in Placer County Fire and in Placer County Fire, correct?
Yeah, with the exception of Station 77, which is a three-person paramedic engine, four-person paramedic truck, which, as Tim said, is kind of the standard of the industry in what I would say more fully funded and appropriately staffed fire departments across the region.
So our local jurisdictions have a higher number of people, I mean, they're staffed at three, which is helpful for us to know, right?
Yep.
Because what you've got in Roseville and Rockland, in South Placer, is different up the hill.
Correct.
Or to the west. Thank you. Jane, you were going to make a comment?
Certainly, just to amplify upon Supervisor Holmes' comment, in addition to the board budget workshop on November 10th, we also have scheduled next Tuesday, October 27th, the first quarter fiscal report, which will also give the board an update on how our revenues are faring as we kick off fiscal 2021. I don't want to seal Daniel Chatney's thunder, but property taxes thankfully so far are holding their own. Sales taxes, which impact cities far more than counties, are the ones that are experiencing the most impacts.
Yeah, thank you, Jane. So we'll definitely have more conversation next week and as we move forward with how COVID is affecting our general fund. Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, one more comment. The importance of three-man staffing, or three-person staffing, excuse me. You know, firefighters put their lives on the line every time they go out on a call. And if one of them gets hurt, what are you going to do? You've got one firefighter trying to help the other one. That's why three staffing, three-member staffing is so important. And that's why you see that in the cities. And that's why we need to find a solution here for our fire ministry.
Thank you, appreciate that. So we need to talk a little bit about what we want to do as far as next steps. And so let's talk about next steps. Obviously, we've got a lot of work to do before we continue, but Supervisor Gustafson, or, let's see, sorry, this is backwards, so Supervisor Gustafson, go ahead.
Well, I made a comment earlier that I'd love to see us form a committee that's expanded beyond just Supervisor Holmes and myself, with two members of the board, and then representatives from each of the zones of benefit that we're talking about, to bring them into this conversation as to how we move forward. And I would also, there was something else, and I've forgotten it, but Jim, you may remember it. There was another thought we had on this.
Well, I don't know if this hits what you're thinking, looking at, but one of the reasons why I asked the board to form the North Auburn Over Fire Safe Council is that's the place to start. Because those, these people are getting educated about the fire service and what they need to do. And so that's the place to start. And then there are community leaders out there that we need to, you know, I can name several of them, but we need to chat with them and see if they're willing to come forward and help us address this issue, because we need their support in order to get anywhere.
Right. Well, and part of it is education, right? I mean, before we can move forward with any type of action, our residents have got to be informed about the challenges that we have, right? The financial challenges, the importance, I think people understand the importance of our fire service, but they don't, also don't understand the funding and that I might live in Dry Creek and I don't have the same service in Morgan Creek as I do across the border from the City of Roseville, right? So I think it's really important for us to educate our community and have them be aware of all of the ramifications and the needs in order for us to increase service. So I may think a community ad hoc committee would be great with the two of you, residents from each of the zones of benefit. And of course, they can be open to the public, so maybe, and I don't know how the Fire Safe Councils work, but those are our people who really understand fire more than anything, right? And those folks can be included, participate as well.
Yeah, and they're, you know, their purpose is a little bit different, but some of those might participate in the, yeah, in the fire services delivery discussion.
Supervisor Gustafson, I think your other point was really, what can we do to dissect what people are paying between the truly local service and the regional services that perhaps should be a burden that's otherwise shared?
But that would need, to Supervisor Yuler's point, is really to look at the broader county and identify that as well, and have those concepts discussion. My other point I did remember was looking at multiple funding mechanisms. What other funding mechanisms are out there? What have other jurisdictions looked at? Is there a potential on sales tax for the unincorporated areas? Because that may offset, you know, the parcel tax directly. And could that be countywide? And could it benefit some of these other areas that are in the unincorporated area?
So it's time to take the show on the road. We need to get out to neighborhoods and homeowners associations, different places where people gather.
Well, I think it's starting with a committee first, of the two of you, plus people from these different zones of benefit, to really have a deep dive, so that they understand the needs, and get them educated, and have some recommendations, and then continue the dialogue with us as a board for then next steps, right? Because we don't know what we're going to go on the road with yet. We don't have, we haven't made a decision at this point, but I think that, starting with this group, we can move from there. Any other thoughts, comments?
Sure.
You know, I'm looking at you, Robert, you've got a lot of experience, and you haven't said anything. And we have plenty of time.
I'm just inherently a quiet person, to speak for myself. I did have my light on, but I know that's confusing.
Oh, sorry.
Actually studying for next year, I'm confused already. So I'll throw in my three cents, I guess, at this point. But one, I think I strongly would encourage us to lean towards 3B alternative. I think it's the only one that really makes sense.
Yeah.
And I replicate some of Cindy's comments about positioning ourselves for, with all of the details that I think are going to have to be looked into, but a long-term solution to this, in the years that I've been on the board, as Jim has articulated, we've been kicking around fire protection for a long, long time, with some successes, a lot of confusion, a lot of unfairness and disparity in terms of different areas and places and folks. So I think if we keep an eye on that long-term vision, we'll really have clarity in what ends up being considered. So I like the idea of expanding the committee. Thank the both of you for the work that you've put into us. Thank staff and all of the other resources that we've used for the thoughtfulness that's gone into all of this.
Thank staff and all of the other resources that we've used for the thoughtfulness that's gone into all of this. As we get into some specifics, I'm, I really like the idea of looking at, trying to find financial parity or fairness, however we want to describe that. But as we've discussed and as we've seen over the years, it's really complicated. But but if we try, if we really make an effort to take a look at the kinds of things that Kirk talked about in other districts and just try to keep it at a common sense level, I think some of those financial theories will will sort of come forward. Keep in mind that at the end of the day, when it comes to our revenue options, they're pretty restricted and and in California, difficult. But I but I think that'll be the best way to start. And one plug I'll make is that with the United Auburn Indian community, we of course have a unique relationship. And in the very beginning, they were anxious to have a very high level of service. So they were wanting to fund that, particularly as the casino startup got underway. And all of that's been phenomenally successful, including police protection. But we had a commitment from the very beginning that whereas they were going to be paying a a higher proportion of the cost, over time, the county was commit to trying to, committed to trying to find parity out there. And I know we've done a lot of that work, but I want the financial analysts to take that into consideration as we look out over the next 30 years to make sure that that relationship is is fair and as constructive as it as it should be. And I think those are all my comments.
Thank you. I had one other thought, and that was in regards to dispatch dispatch services. A while back, having served on the City of Roseville, we were talking a little bit with our, with the City of Rockland and are there ways that we could share our dispatch services as municipalities? Now, I know they take care of fire and police, but I think it's worth even starting some conversations with our municipalities about are there opportunities to do dispatch services together? It's a little bit challenging because you only do fire and EMS and the cities have police as well. But if we're talking about models for success, it may be worth starting conversations to bring down some of these barriers and talk about how do we do some of these things together? It may or may not work, but I think it's something that we should be aware of and think about as we move forward.
Yeah, Supervisor, that if there's one thing that all the fire chiefs agree on, believe it or not, it's that we need a better communication and dispatching services across the West Lope of Placer County. How we get there is the $64,000 question because you're you're exactly right. And, you know, as law enforcement.
If it's only $64,000, I'm moving.
We can, we can.
I know, I could second that, too. It was only that.
That was Slide 17, I'm sorry. The, as you, as as I've talked before, you know, the the what we call PSAPS or Public Safety Answering Points always come into that law enforcement entity, whether it be CHP, Sheriff's Office, or a city PD. And so that will always exist. And and I guess for all intents and purposes, they always kind of tend to be the foundational part. They're never going to really succumb to their to their authority. And so on the fire EMS side, you know, we are always transferred that call from that public safety answering point. I think the challenge for us or the, you know, finding that solution is the most effective way for that transfer to be simultaneous, number one. And number two, for the fire side of that dispatching to be as efficient and professional and fire EMS oriented as possible and not have a law enforcement priority to it. And and that's a challenge that we all we all realize in the county and we all want to find a solution to. And and it's just, and I think we'll get there. The fire chiefs are actively talking about that and have been since I've been the chief here.
Well, that that's good to hear. Thank you, Supervisor Gustafson.
I I was just going to encourage that. I recently unfortunately witnessed a bicycle accident and there was no vehicle involved. But by the time, you know, as you know, in North Tahoe, it went through three, two transfers. And I was almost at North Tahoe Fire Station to walk in and tell them, go, go help this woman by the time we heard the sirens start. And that that's just that delay in going to law enforcement, downloading all the information. Then it went finally to Grass Valley, which was great. They got right on it and then we got the response. So, you know, minutes make a difference in lives and we need and we just have to find a way to make that happen as efficiently as possible.
I agree 100%.
Thank you. All right, any other, since this is a workshop, any other comments from our public? Any comments from you all upfront? Any questions we didn't answer, ideas, suggestions? This is your opportunity, yes, sir. Come on up. Hey, I I'm giving you the opportunity. Yes, please. That's why we're here, you know? We're we're much better at, we're much better if we answer questions.
So as far as the funding and stuff goes, I'd be very curious on the amount of funding that goes into the to the volunteer program and what that would afford us as far as another staffed station or how far the volunteer funding would go and how and the the amount of calls that the volunteers show up on as compared to the costs and just do an analysis on that. I don't know if that's something that's been done yet, but but with the the vast hole that's up there in the the thermal and Sheridan area and stuff that's covered by by Engine 70, it just seems like that's something that should at least be looked at to get, because response times are definitely not what should be our our standard up there. And I don't know what the the benefit or what the the answer is, but that'd be something that I'd be real curious.
Thank you. And I mean, I think that that's, we've got a couple of stations that still have volunteers, which is terrific, but it may not be the most ideal. And go ahead, Chief, but it's part of that conversation as we're talking with our community.
Yeah, it's it and it's a it's a great question and unfortunately, and I and I think some of my local government partners that still have volunteers within their ranks are probably experiencing the same evolution. But, you know, to to be a volunteer in today's fire service is incredibly difficult. It's demanding the the requirements and the constraints on them, really, the, you know, for federal and state law, expect them to be the same as a career firefighter. And and so unfortunately, you know, the volunteer and reserve ranks have somewhat diminished as as departments evolve and become more staffed and 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 as their population density increases, the volunteers kind of go away. In, you know, in Supervisor Wegant primarily's district, you know, the volunteers have a really, really rich history, really rich history. And we really try to to respect that out of them and make them part of the system, you know. But it but but Tim's concern is is valid. Their their the responses from the volunteer companies have reduced in nature and and the response times for their career companies have gotten longer. And and so we are looking at internally, between myself and my chief officers, we're looking at some different alternatives than just the traditional volunteer program to bring on more of a reserve or paid call program like some of my partner agencies do around the county and or looking at where we need to just kind of look at that next staffed model versus a career reserve model. So yeah, completely valid comments.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. All right, so Jane, you got what you needed?
We do. In fact, our ad hoc committee is scheduled to meet on Thursday to debrief the board discussion and plan out next steps. So thank you very much for the conversation.
All right, so thank you all for joining us. Thank you, Chief and your team for being here. I know you all have been working very hard, you and your team, for the last number of months because of fire season. So good news is that most, I think I hear all of your folks are back home, which is terrific after spending probably months fighting fires throughout the state of California. So thank you for being here. We are going to adjourn, we will, we're going to adjourn and then we are going to have, we're going to adjourn to 1:00 this afternoon at the Cal Fire headquarters over on Lincoln Way to basically have a little luncheon to say thank you to Cal Fire just for all of your hard work. So we will adjourn until 1:00 this afternoon. And then, of course, our next board meeting is next Tuesday, the 27th, and we will be in Tahoe. And so with that, I will adjourn the workshop. Thank you, everyone, for being here.